The opening statement. As Chair of the Southampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Southampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: 646-876-9923 and webinar ID 96062393627. And the password is 478934, or by clicking on the website address which is listed on the agenda. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 Office at www.sau21.org. If anyone has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email at rehavens@SAU21.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law.
Sharon Gordon?
Here, no one's in the room.
Rebecca Burdick?
Here, dogs.
Jim Kine?
I'm here and alone.
Alright, I have the roll call.
Okay, great. So, let's get the agenda up. So first, we have the minutes from the meeting on April 2nd, 2020. Does anybody have any comments up out of them, or any issues? Alright, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from April 22nd, 2020, as written.
Second.
And, although, doing a roll vote, yeah.
Yeah, Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Jim Kine?
Yes.
Okay, I have the vote recorded.
Great, thank you. Next is the finance report. Matt, do you want to run through that?
Yes, good evening. So, the fiscal year expenditure and revenue reports are included. We are estimating that we should end... So, this report is fairly accurate as to how we'll end the year, where we should be, you know, right in that $30,000 to $35,000 in unexpended funds. We recognize some, you know, some small savings due to the, you know, the remote instruction. This included, you know, areas such as heating fuel, electricity, you know, our transportation costs, spring extra regular stipends, and, you know, some small savings with supplies, copier, that type of thing. So, we will have about $35,000 unexpended year end. We also have about $10,000 that's being returned to the town with the dissolution of the generator expense trust, as well as another $14,000 in unanticipated revenue, or revenue that we received more than what we had estimated. So, we do feel that we'll fully fund our two expendable trusts that were passed at ballot in March. $20,000 for the building maintenance expendable trust, and $15,000 for the special education expendable trust. So, once you remove those monies, we are looking at, you know, probably $25,000 that will return to the town to offset assessments. So, I'd be happy to go in depth on any of the accounts, if anyone has any questions.
No, I was good with it. I mean, it's gonna be nice to return some money to the town this year, I think, given the circumstances. And Becky, or Sharon, did you guys have anything specifically on the reports, or?
No, I'm good, no questions, thank you.
No, no questions. I guess maybe the only question was, what did Dennis have in mind? That he thought, was that about what he was thinking? I can't remember.
Well, I tell Dennis, he can't expect to get any money back. We budget for a reason, because we feel that that's what we're gonna spend. I'm not certain what his assumption... I think it's typically this timeframe that he starts making some budget assumptions. You know, I'm actually, I'll actually reach out to him to provide kind of our year-end estimates, and then I know he'll do his calculations. But this is around the time where we touch base and look at what the, you know, what the year-end looks like. So, I'm not certain what his assumption was.
Okay, alright, thanks.
I mean, last year, we returned nothing.
Nothing, right.
He couldn't have assumed much, but...
Yeah.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Alright, great. Next, we have public comment. Do we have anybody on as participants? I don't think so, right? Okay. Alright, we'll can move on then. Continuing in business, just an update on the COVID-19 relative to school closure.
Yep.
So, is this you?
Yep, I'll start, and then Dr. Hobbs, Dr. Killian, Mr. Farrar, and Dr. Houston will join in. So, I'll keep mine fairly brief. We have started a return to school task force and a set of working groups. They've been working now for about a week on the areas of crisis response, return to instruction, post-secondary response, technology and operations, largely around three different scenarios, which, you know, we heard the most about in terms of what September may look like. That is, you know, a return to school, a continuation of remote learning, and sort of rolling closures in the event that hotspots were to crop up in different parts of the country, or in our case, in our school districts. We're trying to deal with these issues and others around all of those scenarios. Thanks to Jim, who's serving on that task force, and we have board representation from across the SAU, from each one of our boards. We're anticipating some sort of a report by the middle of June. We're anticipating starting some work more specifically at the building level by the beginning of June, with that culminating with specifics of how this might all work at the building level by the end of June. We're gonna get some guidance from the Department of Education. Unfortunately, that's not gonna come until the end of June, much like the summer school ESY guidance that we got. It's later than we need it. We have to actually make some decisions, ideas of what we have to do prior to that. And we intend to make sure that we update the community and our boards regularly through those board forums, or your board meetings, or written communication, and the public through some written communication. So, I have something that'll probably go out to the public over the weekend or beginning of next week, that just spells out specifically what we're doing. We've already talked to teachers about those pieces. So, and I have three fifths of the chairs of those working committees here with me as well. So, I guess that's the one area that I wanted to make sure that I touched on. I want to say one other just word about your principal and the principals in general. They have been faced with a very difficult task in terms of end of the year celebrations, and in the case of the high school graduation, in a scenario that keeps changing. I actually got some additional information today, which, when we shared it with the Winnicott principal and board, makes the idea of in-person kinds of celebrations even more difficult than we thought it might have been a week or two ago. And so, I just want to applaud all of their efforts in terms of putting things together that honor eighth graders and that honor our graduating seniors, and try to best approximate some sort of set of celebrations. Because I think, personally, I think they've done great work, and I know that isn't gonna please everyone who has an eighth grader or a 12th grader, but given the constraints that they're working under, that I just think they've gone above and beyond in trying to put things in place for kids. So, I wanted to make sure I said that I can expand on some of that information that we think we continue to get on graduations and celebrations later on. But if you have any questions for me, particularly on the return to school, if not, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hobbs. Dr. Hobbs?
Okay, hearing none. I'll limit my updates to the task force. We actually, I'll be chairing the return to instruction working group, and we actually met this afternoon. Thank you, Michelle, for coming and participating. It's great to have a working group of, we're at 12 right now, probably 13 or 14 by the time we finish up. And we've got a great set of voices and a great set of opinions, so I'm excited about the work. We broke our task, which is basically curriculum alignment, down into four segments for return to school. The first segment is going to be assessing student learning. In other words, you know, where are students coming from this spring, where are the gaps in learning? I think it was Becky Burdick that had the question last time about using assessments primarily in the fall and summer, and seeing kind of as diagnostics to see where we are. So, we had that conversation, one. Two is augmenting instruction. How are we changing instruction come fall? And of course, as Dr. Lupini said, we're cutting it across the scenarios, the various scenarios, coming back as a hybrid model, coming back face-to-face, and of course, the remote model. So, augmenting curriculum instruction entails grading and assessment, attendance, student accountability, to some extent, a remote learning 2.0, right? How do we iterate this? How do we evolve this into something that makes sense for families when paired with face-to-face education coming back? The third group is going to be looking at structural supports. They're looking at ways we can use school schedules, way we can augment remote learning schedules, and even ways we can better utilize staff and support staff throughout the school to kind of plug the holes and fill the gaps in our spring efforts. And then last, of course, is gonna be professional development. And, I mean, we can all understand the need for professional development around this. I think the return to task, the return to school task force is the initiative. We just gotta support that in a variety of ways for our teachers, and that also includes new teacher orientation and new administrator orientation, which I'm sure we'll need. So, that's where we are. Like I said, we met today. We will be reporting on Monday to the primary working group, the task force, and we got some good work ahead. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. So, I'm chairing the crisis response working team. So, our team is focusing on student and staff health and mental health in all aspects across our reentry plans. We're gonna be looking at staff readiness and evaluate staff self-care and reporting protocols to understand student and staff health as we look to plan for that across the four scenarios. And I'm very happy to have Aileen Dunabedian on this team with us, representing Southampton. We did meet this week and talking about prioritizing staff so they can be ready to come in and support our students, and supporting a climate of caring, gathering resources, and creating a common language and clear communication to reduce whatever anxiety staff may have as we put forward our plans. In that, a couple weeks ago, we put out a wellness survey to all staff to find out how they're doing, to find out how they're doing and what we can do for them. We had some pretty interesting results. Over 200 respondents said they were good to okay. So, the majority were good to okay. We were happy with that. Not, you know, we didn't have a lot of teachers saying they were fair to poor, so we were happy with that. However, they admittedly reported that, you know, administration is very supportive. However, they're very hard on themselves. We're hearing teachers still are working through the night. They are emailing after hours, over weekends. They're hard on themselves, working harder than ever. So, they also asked for us to, whatever is non-essential, to put that on hold. And as Dr. Hobbs mentioned, remote learning is the new initiative right now. And as we're planning, we wanna make sure that we keep that in mind, that, you know, we're doing remote learning now, crisis learning right now. However, there's much more planning and preparation to come as we prepare for the beginning of another school year, given students being out for the last three months of the prior year. So, the beginning of the school year, we have to meet kids where they are in that. Teachers asked for non-work meeting opportunities to get together, so they have stepped up and hosted sessions for each other. We have a whole wellness calendar of game night, of self-care, of, we've got a couch to 5K session coming up. Your own Joanne Hernan, special ed teacher, who's also an incredible yoga teacher. I'll be honest, I could not keep up. That was last night. She is amazing. So, and we have two more weeks full of sessions that teachers... It was the easiest thing I could possibly coordinate, and pretty fun right now, too, because people just stepped up and said, hey, I wanna host something for my peers. So, that's really nice that they're doing for each other. The last update I'll give you is about special education. I'll be sharing with families pretty soon about ESY, as Dr. Lupini mentioned. We don't yet have that guidance. I haven't seen it yet. They promised it mid-May, which I think we're in mid-May, but we don't have it. So, this summer, most, all of our ESY, our summer program, programming will continue to be remote learning. We can make a couple exceptions and considerations if we want to look at some special situations for clinical work or evaluations. But at this point, we're looking at a remote situation. We're continuing our meal service throughout the summer. And the other, this just in today, Department of Special Education for the state just opened up Nessus Connect, which is a parent portal for parents to sign IEPs electronically. Woohoo! So, that's really great for a few reasons. However, they gave us like two business days to prep our staff for that. So, that's going live Monday night. So, there's that. So, there'll be some information on that tomorrow as far as ESY, Nessus Connect parent portal, meals, and I'll throw some resources in there, too, so they don't throw anything at me. And that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a few things, being on the committee, I'd say the bones and kind of outline of the structure looked very comprehensive. And I think just given the way the entire administration, and then specifically the teachers, and Walter, you've kind of acted through this, has really given me a lot of confidence just in our ability to kind of prepare for next year. And I just want to thank everybody for all that you've done. It's clearly not, nothing I think anybody expected, but it's pretty amazing to see people kind of rise to the occasion. And that's definitely what I've experienced here. I think the mental side of it's gonna be pretty interesting. I just know from talking to some other parents and seeing it with my kids, like, the kids, I thought, did pretty well early and are kind of starting to hit breaking points. I don't know if any of the other school board members have seen that, but I had one, maybe a week and a half ago, hit it, and was talking to another parent today, and they're just hit it today, you know. So, it's, you know, I think that's something we clearly need to consider as we look towards next school year, and just given the uncertainty if it's gonna be, you know, in school, or remote partially, or some kind of hybrid model, which I think's all gonna get figured out. It's just, how do we address those? It's clearly gonna be a... I think just from my side, it's, I've always thought of school as the education side, but there's also the social side of it, and aspect of it, especially when you take that away, clearly is, I think, just as important, maybe even more so important. So, I just want to thank everybody and express my confidence and kind of the ability to perform moving forward.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you. Mr. Farrar?
Good evening. So, as we look to next fiscal year, we are starting to get some clarity as far as funding sources. We have received our allocations for the CARES Act funding via the federal stimulus. Across the SAU, we're receiving about $370,000. Unfortunately, for Southampton, it's calculated based on the appropriation of Title I funds. So, Southampton is receiving $0 of the CARES funds. That being said, there is the, there are available FEMA funds that we have put in an application or started the process of applying for, and that will offer reimbursement of 75% of expenditures that qualify. So, that includes items such as, you know, cleaning and disinfecting, you know, sanitizing, some, you know, some, you know, PPE type of expenditures. But we are, we will be applying, you know, to hopefully recoup some of those costs. So, Dr. Lupini and I have been meeting with our various town officials, and we did have the opportunity to meet with Southampton town officials, the town administrator, budget committee chair, and a select board member. And really, our challenge, or our focus was to discuss the challenges that the town's facing in regard to tax revenue and collection, as well as, it did provide, we did want to convey to them the actions that we're taking as far as cost-saving activities, and then those potential revenue sources that we're looking to explore. You know, unfortunately, again, there's not much coming from CARES, but we have been hearing, you know, that there may be another round of stimulus funds, which may change that. So, I think a common theme that we've seen when we've met with all of our towns in regard to tax collection is that there is a degree of uncertainty as to how this crisis is gonna affect those revenues. All of our towns, you know, are analyzing the data and looking at a number of factors. You know, unfortunately, there's no real model as to how, you know, to predict, you know, and really in an accurate fashion. You know, I will say that Southampton, those officials did seem to have a pretty good grasp of, you know, of tax revenues in Southampton, just, I think, because of the size. It's primarily residential, and then we have the campground. They were looking, they felt, they felt cautiously, I'll say cautiously optimistic, but really, we won't have any hard, hard and fast data until after the July 1st, you know, due date for taxes. So, as such, we are meeting with all of our town officials. We do want to follow up with them and keep the dialogue open, maintain this relationship, and make sure there's really a cooperative partnership, because all of our budgets are interrelated, and it affects all of our residents. So, we are meeting with each of these towns, you know, either on a monthly basis or in many cases, after that July 1st date, so that we can have some real data to discuss. So, we will keep you updated as, once we have some more visibility into that component of this crisis. So, as we look into next year, you know, as I've mentioned before, we do expect that there'll likely be additional costs once we have a better idea of what school will look like when we reopen. As you know, we have our return to school task force working on various scenarios, and as part of that exercise, we are, we will try to quantify at least an estimate of costs in each of those scenarios. I mean, it's, there's a lot of uncertainty, but we will at least try to do our, we'll do our best to come up with some estimated costs. So, I will be chairing the operations working group, and I'll take a look at, you know, facilities, athletics, food service, transportation, in general logistics within the building from an operational standpoint. We did meet this past week, and we're asking, you know, as we develop our action plan, we are asking, you know, the types of questions that, you know, that correlate with the various scenarios as far as, you know, what, you know, will PPE be required? Will we need, what type of screening for staff and students? You know, what USDA requirements do we need to look at, as well as CDC and NHIA for athletics? So, it's a big task, but we've got a great group working on it. I'm also working with the technology working group that is chaired by Jason Saltmarsh, our technology director at Winnicott. And he's really doing a fantastic job of leading that. I have the full confidence in him. He'll be asking the questions as far as, or developing a plan as to what type of technology is required. You know, of course, that's in conjunction with the return to instruction working group as to what their needs are as far as devices and software, and, you know, support, and, you know, potentially monitoring remotely. So, they are working concurrently, as well as the post-secondary working group, which is chaired by Donna Couture, who leads our ELO program at Winnicott. So, before I wrap up, I do want to take this opportunity, actually, I'm sorry, stepping back, one more, one more financial piece. I do want to take note that we are working with each of our principals to reassess our budget assumptions for next year. You know, with potential new investment and new costs due to the COVID-19 impact, we want to really reassess where, what our assumptions were as far as enrollments, curriculum, programs. reassess where, what, what our assumptions were as far as enrollments, curriculum programs and and look and really look at prioritizing our budget for next year. In the event that we need to expend, there will obviously need to be a corresponding reduction somewhere. So we don't want to be flat footed when it comes to savings. If we're, if we don't have the funding available, we're going to have to prioritize what's, you know, other areas of the budget. So so we've, Dr. Lupini and I have already met with Dr. Houston and Ms. Witt. We've started that dialogue and we are, we are continuing that. We have a meeting scheduled to follow up in a couple of weeks. And that that's really an ongoing process. You know, we're always, you know, there's always an element of evaluation on the budget side, but it'll be even more intense this year due to the economic crisis. And finally, I do just want to thank you, the school board, as well as our our amazing food service team with, you know, Dr. Eric Kalian, our school nutrition manager, staff, our school nutrition staff, our social workers and educational associates, who have all cooperatively worked to 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 provide meal, free meals to our our families and our students. So thank you to the school board to for approving continuation through the summer. This is a really important initiative to support our families, not just, not just, and this is open to all, all, all families regardless of need. We all need it in some manner while we're working remotely, caring for our kids, keep helping assist them in their educational progress. And meals are oftentimes the last thing that anyone wants to worry about. So we want to make sure that that's provided for everyone. We're serving approximately 300 students per per day and we anticipate that number to increase. So, so thank you and to the community. We did start a fundraising campaign via GoFundMe and that's raised over $10,000 to to fund the, the, there's a small gap between USDA reimbursements and and what we anticipate this to cost us. You know, we're expecting about $20,000 deficit. So that goes a long way in helping our our families and students. So I'd be happy to answer any questions in regard to any of these items I've discussed.
I have, I have a question. This is to, I guess, maybe Walter and to you. So I don't know if anything has been discussed about what to do with some of the money that may be left over from the eighth grade. Is that something that could possibly be contributed to this GoFundMe page, like some of that money?
So tip, I'm trying to think of the policy. So the eighth graders can make a donation or a class gift. I think it's up to $1,000, I want to say. And then the excess funds are supposed to go into the, I believe, the field trip student activity fund that can be used from with the next, you know, the preceding classes. So I guess there's, there is always the potential to request a waiver of policy. If they, if they were interested in donating the excess funds to the food, to the, to the food service program, absolutely. That the board can always has that ability to waive a policy if that's what they're interested in. So I'm not sure if Walter, have, have they even bought a gift yet?
No, because we, there's about $7,000 this year that the class has raised. We're using a portion of that, a very small portion to do our DC in a Box project. There probably will still be about $6,000 left. So no, they haven't. Usually that doesn't happen until after school gets out where that decision is made on a class gift. So.
So is there an option for the kids to actually do a class gift to the school and then also contribute some, not all, but some of the money to the food service FundMe page, GoFundMe page, and then the rest would obviously go into the the account for the field trips and and whatnot?
Yeah. So if Walter wants to talk with that group and if that's something they're interested in, we can make that proposal to the, for board approval and to waive the policy and do that donation if that's something the class is interested in.
Now, Matt.
So I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't say anything to Jim or Sharon about that. I just, it just popped into my mind right now while we were kind of talking about it. I just thought that would be a a nice thing for the students to do, you know?
Yeah, I think that's, I think it's good to point out that fund. I've been thinking a little bit about it too, because obviously there's going to be some excess dollars there just given the circumstances and what's the best way to allocate that? The only other need I could potentially see as we look forward to the the next year, depending on how that kind of reentry plan comes, is is there going to be a technology need? Which I know some of our teachers have already expressed a potential that there may be some technology needs, which could be another potential source of our idea to use the funding if the those kids wanted to give a gift.
So Matt, I have a question concerning the policy. The policy says $1,000. If the kids wanted to give more than $1,000, is that what the board we need to approve next month on?
So, so there's two components of this. So there's a $1,000 threshold for the gift. So if they want to make it as part of the gift, then yeah, I mean, they could just, they could do it up to $1,000 as their gift and they wouldn't need any approval. If they want to go over the $1,000, then they would need, they would need board approval. And then, and because then there's the, because, because the policy, I believe, states that any, anything over the thousand goes into that field trip activity fund.
Which, because we had leftover money from years past, there's already about $7,000 or $8,000 from years past that are in.
As I recall, it's pretty significant. So.
Yeah, we already did a waiver.
There might be, so I think there's I think there's a, because that's where I said the first threshold, because I think there's a second threshold of like $5,000 for to go into the field trip, which the board, which Jim's right. I believe the board waived that threshold. So I think there's absolutely, there's some opportunity to have some discussions about particularly after this year with what that balance is going to look like as to how to best utilize that that account of those funds. So.
That field trip fund, is that for the, just the eighth graders or is that the whole school?
My understanding is for the whole school. Once it goes into the general eighth grade, I mean, general fund, it's for the whole school to do field trips with.
And I mean, I, I believe that that's correct. Again, we'd have to take a closer look at the policy, but I'm fairly certain it's for field trips in general for the school.
Does that go towards like the Camp Cody stuff? No.
I mean, we could use it for Camp Cody if you wanted to. Right now, they do their own fundraising and parents pay their own fund. At this point, Camp Cody is on hold.
Yeah.
Here's class. I've already spoken to Mrs. Sestrani and she's already making arrangements that we're not going in the fall. They'll probably go hopefully next spring. But yeah, they, because they've already done their fundraising for it. So.
Right. Anna won't be disappointed. She's all nervous about it already.
Yeah, I think, I think it's definitely something we need to kind of keep in mind just on where, what kind of, what the potential uses are and kind of what the mechanisms are if we needed to provide a a board waiver or kind of motion or whatever. And I think there's two, two aspects of that. You had the excess cash that was in place from previous fundraising and then you had this year's, which was probably, it was just directly a result of the cancellation of the trip.
Right.
Dr. Houston, who, who do you need to touch base with to figure out a communication with the kids, the students on that?
What I can just simply do is call an eighth grade class meeting and we'll meet together as an eighth grade class and I'll share with them, you know, here's some ideas. And see what they have to say. And we, what I probably will end up doing though, because I don't want to give anything away, because our whole DC in a Box thing is a surprise, is to wait until we're done or at least halfway through that week, maybe pull them together.
Okay. Sure. And did, since the, well, I guess it was for the DC, it was for the trip. So we don't have to approve that, right? The board doesn't have to approve that money being used for it virtually or however we're doing it.
And the the costs have been very minimal at this point. I don't see there being, like I said, we're spending a fraction of that amount of money.
Right. Okay.
Okay, great. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Dr. Eric Kalian, could you give a little bit more information from that survey that you did with the staff?
You're on mute.
Absolutely. I'm going to refer to it while I'm talking to you so I can share.
Sorry, I should have asked while you had it up.
No, it's, I didn't have it up earlier either, so it's totally fine. So we had 219 responses. There were 16 from Bernard. And a whole, like, we asked them what roles they, they were who are responding. So we have that information, we have it. 50% were teachers who responded of the 219. 23.7% were the EAs. 11% were specialists. And then we asked during this period of remote instruction, how would you describe your overall well-being? And 100 people said okay. 86 people said very good. 15 people said excellent. 16 people said fair. And two said poor out of 219. So we were, we were very pleased that 186 out of 219 were okay or very good. And then we asked a little deeper about more about themselves. So we asked about if they feel cared about. 123 said they agree. We asked if they can express their concerns and difficult feelings. 111 said they agree. If they can ask for assistance, 112 said they agree and 70 strongly agree. Encouraged to take care of myself, 103 agree and 83 strongly agree. And then finally, I routinely practice self-care. So 116 agreed and 59 strongly agreed. And then, so that's when we asked them to look inward and then we turned it outward and we asked, please provide any additional comments or feedback on how our school system might further promote staff well-being during this period of remote instruction. So we had, you know, obviously over 200 responses, but they range from there were a few themes that emerged, as I said. So they were, you know, just getting through during this very unique and difficult, challenging time that, you know, we didn't plan on totally just sprung upon us. We got feedback that the schedule, the weekly schedule was very helpful to have Fridays as students working independently, staff, not new instruction meeting time, appreciating SAU and building administration. And a common theme of please, not anything new at this time.
So what do they mean, what do they mean by that, not anything new?
So for example, like a new initiative, you know, if we were, like, it's kind of good that we did Power School last year. Let's start there. So this would not be a good time to say, we're going to start Power School this fall. It's a good example of something new. But what we will do is we will plan and prepare for what what we have to do for kids, you know, to meet kids where they are. So, so all of that still has to go on. We have to plan and prepare for the classes that we teach, given this situation without adding something like brand new like that for teachers to to learn. So that's what they meant by that. But overall, it was positive and they came to the table with ideas and we put some of it in place and they stepped up to to support each other. So.
That's great. Were you pleased with the, the number of responses, the 216? What, what percentage of the whole population is that?
You know, that's a good question. I don't know our total number of employees, but I was very pleased. I know there are like 90 teachers at, at Winnicott alone. So let me just go back there a second.
In terms of response rates, I'm getting like anywhere from 260 to 280 probably per week, just to put it in context. It was a good, it was a good number.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it was pretty good.
Yeah, that's great.
110 teachers responded. And it's a really nice distribution across the schools.
Say that one more time. I missed that.
Sorry, it's a really nice distribution across, like, all the schools have representation here. So Winnicott, 72 people responded. Seabrook Middle, 20. Seabrook Elementary, 44. North Hampton, 40. Lincoln Acreman, 26. And Bernard, 16.
And then what was, did you say what, what did the Bernard kids, I'm sorry, staff members say? What was, were they the good to okay or what were they in major, majority of?
Thanks.
Down like that?
They did, but that's in my other spreadsheet and I'll get it.
I'm just wondering if the two that said poor. Curious where they're from.
I'm almost there. Wellness. There we go.
The two who said poor were Bill Lupini and Dick Hobbs.
No one from Bernard said poor.
Oh, good. Were they overall the good to okay or?
They, there's an excellent. Excellent from Bernard. There are one, two, three, five, six very goods. One okay. There's one neutral that says too much screen time. So that was Bernard.
Nice. Thank you.
Sure.
So I have an update on the travel, field trip, travel account. Luckily, we have the pleasure of Rhonda Evans as part of these meetings. So she forwarded me the policy while we're sitting here. Thank you. So there is a, there is a $5,000 threshold. I mean, that, that refers to the eighth grade travel account. So what we had asked you all for a waiver was to maintain anything over the 5,000 in that eighth grade account. The policy reads that anything over the 5,000 then goes into the field, the general field trip account. So we're going to have a similar question this year because it's going to go over the 5,000. What that, what we do with those excess funds, do we put it in the, you know, the policy reads that we should put that into the general field trip or anything over 5,000, which will be the case. And then there's a larger question as to this is going to be a significant amount of money. Is there better use of those funds elsewhere? Or do we just take a look at spending those down with with future field trips? So I just wanted to clarify what the policy reads and it's something that we'll, we'll certainly want to discuss as we move forward into next year.
Yeah, and Becky and Sharon, I think what I was alluding to, I know one of our teachers had expressed just in her experience that they they were seeing like some of the devices that kids were using were they were seeing like some of the devices that kids were using were making it difficult for, from a teaching perspective and I think a, and a problem solving perspective, which I think is going to be addressed as part of the reentry plan. And, but I, I would just, as I'm kind of looking forward, I'm thinking, all right, well, maybe, I mean, I, I just think it could be a potential issue where we see a need, but we have a funding issue or we need to go out to outside funding dollars to try to raise it for the school in order to alleviate that issue. And that could be maybe a, an area that we could, you know, tap to help bridge that. Which would benefit all the students moving forward. But um, obviously, there's, there's going to be a lot that goes in over the next couple of months here as we prepare. So, it's just kind of thinking through that is, it's going to be important.
So are parents just not aware that they can borrow those Chromebooks or?
I think it's also getting the, you know, it's, I think it's a question of, you know, how many does the school have and how many does, what's kind of right? I know my kids have been working on iPads, which aren't necessarily always
Right.
ideal. And I think especially as you get into more of the written based type stuff. So I think it's just a question kind of for the teachers, you know, what's worked, what hasn't worked, what's the best kind of right setup? Just understanding there's a risk that, you know, if something pops up next year that we'll have to go to remote learning, which is clearly a risk that we have to be prepared for.
Jim, and this is to address what Sharon just said too. Couple of things. One, when we went to remote learning, we simply asked a question, does your child have access to a device? And parents said, sure, because there were phones and iPads and all that. Thinking it was going to be two to three weeks when it turned into three months, life turned a little different. We, we've let parents know that if they need devices and parents have come and received them. We do only have, I think there's five Chromebooks left and a handful of MacBooks. We do have a couple of iPads, but we've discovered that the iPads really are not as suitable as we'd like them to be. So it really does become the question of next year going into this, would it be, make more sense to become more one-on-one and making sure we have enough Chromebooks to start the year off with? We do have that technology trust fund that we keep putting money into. So there's about $28,000 in there and it may be to look at that instead of redoing the whole lab, do we use the money this time to buy some more Chromebooks? So there is, there are some funds to be able to do that. But we, Michelle and I met with Matt probably about three weeks ago. Started having that discussion and that conversation about what we would need. First, we needed to look at the infrastructure because adding more devices to what we already have, there's only so many slots and we are at the brink of those slots. So in order for us to add more devices, we need to increase the infrastructure. So getting a bigger server, all of that. But I know today, Jason Saltmarsh and Kyle Brown did a walkthrough of the building to figure out what they would need infrastructure-wise. And Michelle is going to plan to meet with the teachers after July 1st. To really talk to them about what their vision would be and what they would need for, for technology as well. So there is a plan going forward. And starting to talk about what that would look like and then looking at possible funds. We do have some title grant money that I did not tap into this year that we could tap into for next year. So I think there are enough funds that we could do that with. So.
That's good.
Yeah.
All right. Dr. Houston, you want to continue with your report?
So I have basically four things that are going on. While everyone's been talking about the future, what's going to happen, I have to talk about what is happening. One, the team has been doing an incredible job putting together DC in a Box. That will be coming up in another two weeks. Eighth grade parents have been working with Mrs. Cassasa of doing some fun activities for the kids, seeing as they've missed their DC trip. So it'll be coming up in two weeks. Mrs. Lindsay, our art teacher, she's coming in tomorrow. She's hoping to put together a virtual art show because as you know, every year we have our big art project, our art show, and this year that's not going to be able to happen. So she's coming in to take photographs of all the art and then make it a virtual art show and that hopefully will be up and running in another week or two. So that will be in a fun end of the year thing to look forward to. We're also, I put together a plan, I presented it to eighth grade parents last week concerning our eighth grade celebration. Have received lots of feedback from the eighth grade parents. And Dr. Peany and I talked about it earlier this week. Taking all that feedback and trying to come up with the best celebration plan at, that we can. That meets the state guidelines of what we can do and what we can't do, but at the same time trying to be celebratory and they're finishing up of Barnet. If you haven't seen it, the banners are on main app. So drive by the comment, the green area to see all the kids banners. It's, they're very cute and they look wonderful. So if you haven't driven by it, please do. So that, we're in the process of doing that. And then the last thing is, I met with the teachers last week to show them the draft of what I'm calling Operation Return 2020 and it's, the chance for parents to return everything that belongs to the school. So all the devices, the books, all that kind of stuff back to us. But as also returning everything that got left at the school on March 13th because on that Friday, we said, see you on Monday and Monday never came. So we need to return jackets and books. And I found out yesterday that somebody left their glasses at school and I've been going, why didn't you tell me I would have gotten your glasses too? And the mother's like, no, no, we had an extra pair at home. It's okay. But returning those kinds of things, returning their inventions that we were supposed to our invention convention, getting them back to them. So we do have a plan in place that on the last day of school, of how we're going to organize all that on June 4th. So I will be sending out letters to parents in the next week, kind of explaining what the process is going to be. And then we're going to have a sign-up time when people can actually sign up for a time to say, this is when it's convenient for us, best case, to come in and drop stuff off and also get things returned to them. So we will be done by June 4th. Somebody said earlier about how the kids are really coming to an end and I think their energy level, they're done, they're ready for summer. And so our teachers, they have done an incredible, incredible job. I am incredibly proud of them and I think you should be as well. When I talk to people from other districts in neighboring towns, our teachers have done above and beyond. We're worried about where they're going to be in September and yes, we have some concerns. But I'm not as concerned as I would be if I lived in some, some of those other towns that have done nothing. Our teachers have kept the ball running and rolling and they have done an incredible job. So when you see them, please make sure you let them know how much you appreciate them because they have done an amazing job this year. So.
Yeah, I just definitely agree with that. They, you know, I'm able to hear, you know, both, what's going on with both kids. You know, Ms. Cassasa is amazing. She's just so calm and before, the beginning of every class, you know, she always brings the kids together and they have like a little bit of, you know, conversation and she's just, she's just so wonderful with the kids. Same thing with Ms. Peterson. I mean, I don't know how they do it. Like they're so calm and patient and lovely and so they are amazing, for sure.
And talking about Mrs. Peter, Ms. Peterson, she was supposed to get married this week.
I know.
Her wedding has been yet postponed yet again. And it's been interesting because, you know, this was supposed to be the week she was supposed to be away this week, getting ready for a wedding and it's not happening. So, burning your thoughts.
Great, thank you. Ms. Witt, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I, I know you've been doing some work in terms of transition and entry. And I wondered if you might want to say a word about that.
Fair. So I've been meeting with, I've been at all the principal meetings weekly, which has been great because it's helped me kind of transition into the SAU. And I've started meeting with Walter regularly once a week and I have scheduled, I've started meeting with each staff member individually. And I've met with about five people and I'll continue that through the month of May. Everybody's scheduled, so it's been great. I feel like I'm getting a good handle on the town and the staff and their expectations and I feel really good about it. I'm excited to start.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. That's all, Jim.
Short and sweet, right?
Yeah, short and sweet.
All right, next we got federal grant and general assurances.
Yeah, so on an annual basis, we, we as a recipient of federal grants need to sign off on some general assurances. This is done by the superintendent as well as the school board chair. And we are required to provide those assurances to the school board members. So this is, this is that forum. We are providing those full general assurances. It's essentially assuring the federal government that we are abiding by, you know, non-discrimination laws. We're not, we have no conflicts of interests. And all the items that are really all the procedures or the policy, procedures that are indicated in our policy. So this is, that is included in the packet and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you may have some.
Sharon, Becky, you guys good?
I'm good. Good.
Great. Thank you, Matt.
I assume everyone read through the entire document.
Sharon, Sharon and Becky kept texting me about it.
All 20 pages.
All right, next.
Saying this to me.
Jim, before we go to the next thing, can I ask one question for the board members?
Sure.
We discovered that the, the eighth grade diplomas need to be signed. Bill signed today. We were able to get them to him today. I need to get them somehow to you. I don't mind driving and meeting you in your driveways. I know where all of you live, if you'd be willing for me to do that. But we need to get them signed before June 2nd. So I'll put an email and if you could let me, give me a time, that's great. I can just run over and we can do it in the driveway. Fine, so.
Believe it or not, I'm home pretty much every day. All right. Next we have a personnel. Do we need to do, this isn't a non-public thing, is it?
We, we do not, not for a resignation.
Okay.
You know, you have a resignation from, and I believe Walter and Michelle, it's point four, is that correct? It's a point four position?
Yes, it's a point four.
Okay. So there's a resignation from your point four guidance counselor. Who I believe the letter says is, is, has been offered additional employment at her other position and so has taken that as a, as a more, more of a full-time job. And so she submitted her resignation and we've, we've started to talk about some ideas for that, combining it with some, some, some other things in order to, to maybe flesh out more of an FTE for, for that position. Anyhow, what you have in front of you tonight unfortunately is a resignation from someone who I understand has done a great job.
Yeah, she's been working with one of my kids and she's been doing great. So it's been really helpful the past few weeks, just having her for sure. So that's definitely a loss.
All right, so um, can I get a motion to accept the resignation of Danny Rooney as school counselor?
I reluctantly make a motion to accept the resignation of Danny Rooney as school counselor.
I second, I second reluctantly as well. I've heard really good things about her.
Want to do the vote, Rhonda?
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick.
Yes.
And Jim Kind.
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
All right, next, meeting dates. We had the op committee meeting yesterday.
Only yesterday, Jim, yes.
Yeah, I know. And then next week, we have the joint board COVID-19 update, which is on Tuesday the 19th. We have a joint board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the 26th, at 6:00 PM. And then our next Southampton meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 4th, which is actually our last day of school, so.
Can I, can I add another date in there?
Oh, yes, keep, keep them going.
Just a reminder that the superintendent's evaluation closes tomorrow at 4:00. So if you haven't completed that evaluation, if you could please go online and do it. We've tried to make it very simple by doing it as a Google Doc or a form, a survey. So if you could just do that, if you haven't done it, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. And I think that brings us to the end of our meeting schedule. Anybody have anything else?
Nice to see you all.
Yeah, you too. Thank you, everybody. I know I said it earlier, but as a parent and not, not a school board member, I just appreciate everything that everybody's been putting in here. It's just really great to see people step up.
Thank you, Jim. We appreciate that very much. Thank you.
I, I agree with Jim. It's been, I mean, it's really been a, a kind of a pleasure to see some of what's happening through the administration and through the teachers and the students.
Yeah, for sure. And then, you know, just hearing from friends and family that live in other towns and they're just in the weeds, they're just drowning, you know, I mean, the organization and that you guys have and, you know, everything that you've put together is really, it's unbelievable. It doesn't even compare with so much of what I've heard other towns are doing. It's sad, but we're lucky, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm definitely, I'm, I'm on the other side of that because I see what is happening in Amesbury. And it's been, it's been bad.
Yeah.
So that's just, I mean, that's a big fear. I mean, that's kind of just a fear for me for how the entry plan for these kids, the eighth graders going there or even, I mean, I think Winnicott is going to be okay because they've been at this level of the remote learning that we are and I'm sure the private schools will be okay, but I just, I'm, I'm kind of really worried about what's going to happen.
Yeah.
We'll get through it.
Yeah. And, and I, I will, you know, I'll make a note off of this conversation to try to reach out to them to, to see what exactly is happening. So where we might be able to help or assist or, or get in the way or something. I don't know. Just, just to figure out where they are.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think we need a motion to adjourn.
Sharon, I'll let you make that. Go for it, Sharon.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I can't, my second.
I'll do some favor wave. We'll just wave.
I'll make it unanimous.
Thanks, Rhonda. Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.